Thank you all for your attendance. Mr. Dankert, could you please call the roll?
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Baskin.
Present.
Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Osmah.
Present.
Vaschusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Devin Quam, Your Honor.
Thank you. Looking for a motion for the approving of the minutes of March 7th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Option of the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion for item number one to option the agenda first.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number two, then, is a motion approving the minutes from a March 7th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Under item number three, recognitions and awards, we have before us the Austin Packer Dance Team, the state champion Austin Packer Dance Team. I know you've been to state quite a few times, but this is the first time you've won the state, first place, champion. Right on. So is your coach, Kayla Sellers, here? Want to step forward and maybe do some introductions and tell us about your season? Right here to the microphone, please.
I know that you wanted them to all say names. Do you want a microphone or can they just say their names?
Yeah, stand and say their name, sure.
So we'll start at Lauren, and you'll stand and you'll say your name and your grade.
I'm Lauren Murphy, and I'm a senior.
Okay, hold on.
I'm gonna cut it.
That's the dad of a former dance captain right there.
I'm Lauren Murphy, and I'm a senior.
I'm Mackenzie Carter, and I'm a senior.
I'm Meredith Murphy, and I'm a senior.
I'm Cameron Shurian, I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Savannah Morehouse, I'm a freshman.
I'm Gabby Hernandez, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Nora Tweeten, and I'm a junior.
I'm Isabella VR, and I'm a senior.
I'm Lexi Yocle, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Molly Williamson, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Maddie Hazing, and I'm a junior.
I'm Brenna Tashawn, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Carol Wolfson, I'm a junior.
I'm Maddie Staska, and I'm a junior.
I'm Ally Houston, and I'm a senior.
I'm Olivia Slechter, and I'm a junior.
I'm Samantha Johnson Van Pelt, and I'm a senior.
I'm Molly Norton, and I'm a senior.
I'm Chloe Jenkins, and I'm a junior.
I'm Mackenzie Andrews, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Arnie Nagley, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Jimmy Miller, and I'm a senior.
All right. Coach Sellers, anything you want to say about your season and your squad here?
Um, yeah, I came a little prepared. So, fun fact, we're actually losing 13 seniors this year. So it's the largest class we've had in a long time, and they're definitely going to be missed. First, thank you for having us all tonight. We appreciate it, and we absolutely love representing the community of Austin. Many of the teams at state are, you know, those metro schools, so being able to come in as a southern school is really fun. So a little bit about our program history. Twenty years ago was APDT's first trip to state in high kick, and not to age myself, but I was actually an eighth grader on the team that year. Our first trip found us placing third in the state under the leadership of Jennifer Sims, and we have returned to state for the last 20 consecutive years since then. And in those years, we have finished in the top five 16 times. We have placed third five times, and last year was our first time placing second, and now this is our first year placing, taking home the championship in program history. So that was pretty magical and special for us. And it's also the first state team championship that Austin has brought home in 34 years. I don't know if debate counts in that, Mr. Baskin, but I do see you in the trophy case a lot. Same picture.
I don't know if it impresses my family, so.
It's very, very, very good. Alrighty, so this season was two years in the making. Our theme of warriors was put on hold last season due to all the unknowns of COVID, and we actually saved it for this year, and it couldn't have turned out better. We were able to put 30 strong dancers on the floor, 12 of them being seniors. The large number of girls on the floor really made the routine. It helped tell a story of our dance, and throughout the season, our scores really reflected that. But while we had a creative and visual routine, we still had to execute it, which the girls did so well despite a number of setbacks throughout the season. Very, very seldomly did we have our entire team at practice and participating due to COVID and illness and injuries. Throughout all the bumps on the road, they kept their focus on their goals, on what they could control, and most importantly, they kept a positive mindset. Because of their unrelenting focus, we had our most successful overall season in program history. On our journey to state, we competed eight times at some of our most difficult meets to date, and we placed first in seven of them and second in one of them. We won the Big Nine Championship for the first time in 10 years. It no longer resides with Farbo. It was our biggest thing this year. And we actually won the section title for the fifth time in the 20 years, and when we punched our 20th ticket to state, which I promise you, it never gets old, and we never take it for granted, and it's never easy to get to state. We always have to work very hard. They put in many hours in-season and out-of-season, both in the weight room and in the gym. So at the state meet, there are 12 teams that compete in the prelims, and then the top six go to finals. And in prelims, it definitely was not our best performance of the season, but we were still able to come in first, ranked first after prelims going into finals. And we are very thankful that we got another chance to dance because our goal was to put our best dance on the floor last, and with our finals routine, we definitely put our absolute best dance of the season on the floor. So we reached our ultimate goal of no regrets. The support of the community throughout our journey to state and our after was phenomenal, and the support of our fans. We had a student section. For the first time in dance-team-state history, there's never been a team-student section, and Austin was the first to have a student section. Yeah. So after they heard their names, they went over to their section of students, and everyone was like, "What's happening? Why are they doing this?" And then the state tournament coordinators realized what was happening and thought that was pretty special. So I think that speaks volumes to.
Did Baskin get a student section at the debate championship?
Definitely not.
I feel like he probably got a standing ovation. There's like five trophies in that case of the same picture of him. I think you should reenact it.
Yeah, we didn't have enough budget for multiple pictures.
It was the same guy every time, too.
We reversed one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Back before digital photography.
Yes. So again, thank you for having us tonight and for recognizing the talent and accomplishments of these amazing athletes. We appreciate you, and we appreciate our community of Austin. Thank you.
Congratulations. And Coach Kayla and the team, you don't need to stick around for the rest of this, but I do want to know, as the parent of Molly Norton, did Ryan look better with the makeup that he wore as the audience? Did it improve his looks, or did it? Of course it did. I understand the parents in the rooting section wore the makeup that the girls wear, so that's outstanding. Great support from the parents, too. That's awesome. Well done. Yeah. Well done. We expect there, I heard the classes of a lot of you, there's a lot of underclassmen here, so we expect the same thing next year. Then you're losing a good chunk, I get it, but you got a lot of folks coming back, too, so we expect to have you back here a year from now. So go get them. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Stephen?
I was hoping we could move Joe ahead of.
Well, he's got a bad time. He's retired. He's got to get home early.
After 37 years of working behind the scenes, we drug him out here. This is not his forte.
I'm glad you made it.
Out in the eye. So we appreciate Joe coming in tonight. And so to try and summarize 37 years, I made a few notes. So tonight, we're recognizing Joe for his 37 years of employment with the city, started in January of 1985. Worked for different jobs in the street and sewer department for 10 years before becoming a street foreman in 1995. Then was promoted to street superintendent in 2012, where he worked for about 10 years, and retired just recently at the end of February of 2022. So Joe is, he's always held the city's best interests at heart. That's one thing. He's always been a strong advocate for the city, trying to do best for the city, making thoughtful decisions when it comes to budgets and employees, all of those things. And myself, something I've learned through management is that you need to rely on and be, surround yourself with good people. I can't know everything, but I need to know who to get a hold of, and Joe was always one of those guys that I could get a hold of to answer a multitude of questions. And I think a lot of different department heads, whether it be in city hall offices or wherever, you always see Joe coming and going, and a wide variety of people would look to Joe for questions, not just me. So that goes to show just his level of involvement in the, not only with city staff, but also in the community. And for me, he's always been a great mentor, resource, and friend, and that's why I think it's great that we're able to recognize him here tonight.
Right on.
That'll turn it over to Joe if you have anything you want to say. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, right. Joe, it's just great. I'm sure the council agrees that when you have this kind of longevity, it means something. There's no doubt. Certainly, you probably could have taken other jobs along the way, but Austin appeared was near and dear, and you liked your job, and so we're happy that you stayed with it.
I really appreciate it.
And you are very much appreciated.
Seven years, and it's been very good.
That's great.
It's been very good work for Stephen.
That's awesome to hear. Well, if you want to step forward, we got a plaque for you. And Ann told me that before, last week, we were doing the plaque done, so she had this nice paper stock. So you get two. You get two appreciations. There's your paper copy, and there is the appreciation of Joe Sanderman for service to the city of Austin from January 14th, 1985, to February 25th, 2022, in the Public Works Department, respectfully presented by the Austin City Council and Mayor Steve King. Congratulations.
Very much.
Happy retirement. Thank you for all your service. And now that you're retired, Joe, do you drive a Buick and eat separate four? No?
I don't drive a Buick.
Do you still get up to shovel your driveway at like 2:30 in the morning, just out of habit, or are you gonna sleep in a little bit?
Well, thank you, Joe, for your years of service. My goodness, thank you. All right, and then Don Tomlinson, we also recognize his years of service to the city as our first and only, at this point, we have a second one, but our IT director. So he's won't be available tonight, but he served from November 17th, 1999, to March 31st, 2022, in that capacity. So we have two great folks that are leaving us, and hopefully that the folks that are filling their dividend are just as equally qualified and give us that kind of years of service. So thank you. Moving on to item number four, under the consent agenda, motion to accept the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Under petitions and requests, we have a resolution, item number five, approving an annexation of Austin Township for Tom and Heidi Anderson. Holly, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a pretty typical annexation for us. It's regarding a property at 2702 Fourth Drive Southwest. The property owners have petitioned for annexation to access city.
Oh, we got a bad connection, Holly.
Holly?
Mr.
Holly?
We're losing you, Holly.
Yep.
Your connection broke up on us. Could you start again?
Sure. Can you hear me okay now?
So far, yep.
Okay. This is a pre-typical annexation request. Tom and Heidi Anderson at 2702 Fourth Drive Southwest have petitioned for annexation to connect to city store. This is a joint resolution that pre-entails criteria for annexation by ordinance. So there will be a resolution from city council and also from Austin Township. The big difference is from our ordinance is that we typically spread out the tax impact over six years versus two years. The tax amount for the township is probably about $141, so not a large amount. The property will be Zoned R1 Residential, which is its current use, and it's about 1.4 acres, and the property owner will pay.
Oh, we lost her. She's in her office. There you go.
Okay. Am I back on?
Yep. Property owners are gonna pay.
Yep. Yeah, that's all I have. If you have any questions, let me know. I'm upstairs, too, in my office, if you need me to come down.
Okay. Counsel, did you get enough information on item number five to make a resolution out of that annexation?
Yep.
Then I'll take a resolution for number five.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Tom, item number six, and then there. Thanks, Holly. We are, it sounds like we're in for the Mitch Wenham Show of successive, or successive street assessments. So Mitch, item number six is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for 21st Avenue Northeast, 8th Drive Northeast to 14th Street Northeast, project number 22-101, and the amount to be assessed is $111,865.15 at 3.75% for 15 years. Mitch, want to tell us about it?
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. We, at the last two council meetings ago, I think it was, I did a presentation on all of these projects, and I don't plan on doing that same presentation again, but I have it available if there's any questions or anything from the council. Nothing has changed on those presentations. It's the same information, so if you want me to rehash any of that, I can. Otherwise, we have not received any object, written objections from any of the property owners on this project. So I would say you can move forward from here.
I'll call for anybody from the public that want to speak on this item for street improvement assessment for 21st Ave. Northeast. Hearing done. Counsel, any questions or comments for Mitch? If not, look for a resolution for item number six A, presentation of the project and associated assessments. So moved.
Second.
Want to do a roll call on every one of these? Tom?
So item 60, resolution declaring costs. Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Okay, and just to back up, we had no written objections, Mitch?
Right.
Okay. So on to item number six E, then, looking for a resolution adopting the assessment role. So I'll move the resolution. Second. Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number seven is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for 9th Street Northwest from 10th Ave. Northwest to 12th Avenue Northwest and 10th Street Northwest from 8th Ave. Northwest to 13th Ave. Northwest, project 22102. The amount to be assessed is $252,399.65 at 3.75% for 15 years. Mitch?
So again, same presentation that was made at the previous council meeting. Nothing has changed as far as our plans have gone on that project, and I have not received any written objections.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any questions on this item? If not, looking for a resolution for item number seven D, resolution declaring the cost.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Item number seven E is a resolution adopting the assessment role. Oh, is there anybody here in the public that wishes to speak on this project? Okay. Then looking for a resolution adopting the assessment role. Item number seven E. So I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for 3rd Ave. Northeast, Oakland Place Northeast to 19th Street Northeast, project 22103. The amount to be assessed is $226,047.79 at 3.75% for 15 years. Mitchell?
Yep, so again, same presentation that was made a few council meetings ago, and I have not received any written objections for this project.
Thank you. Anybody here from the public wishing to speak on item number eight? Without hearing any, looking for a resolution for item number eight D, resolution declaring the cost.
So move the resolution.
Aye, second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motoring right along. Item number eight E is a resolution adopting the assessment role. So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number nine is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for 3rd Street Northeast from 16th Ave. Northeast to 18th Ave. Northeast, project 22104. The amount to be assessed is $145,940.29 at 3.75% interest for 15 years. Mitch, it's like the street assessment aerobics for you.
Yes.
Sit down, stand up.
So the 3rd Street Northeast project, nothing has changed as far as our plans for the project, and I have not received any written objections.
Thank you. Is anybody from the public wishing to speak on this project? Then without hearing any, 9D, we're calling for a resolution declaring the cost. So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you. Item number nine E is a resolution adopting the assessment role.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number 10 is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for 5th Ave. Southwest from 27th Street Southwest to 19th Street Southwest and 16th Street Southwest from 16th Avenue Southwest to 19th Avenue Southwest, project number 22106. The amount to be assessed is $42,421.71 at 3.75% interest for 15 years. Mitch?
Once again, our plans have not changed at all on these projects or these two streets. And one thing that's slightly different about these projects is they're, these are mill and overlays here versus the full reconstructions on the previous few projects. But once again, I have not received any written objections.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anything, or public, anybody here to speak on item number 10 project? Counsel, any other questions? Looking for a resolution for item number 10 D, resolution declaring the cost. So moved. Second. Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Very good. Item number 10 E is a resolution adopting the assessment role. So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. The last street assessment under the public hearing would be item number 11 is a public hearing on street improvement assessment for 7th Ave. Southwest, 23rd Street Southwest to 14th Street Southwest, and 11th Avenue Southwest from 10th Ave. Southwest to 18th Street Southwest, and 23rd Street Southwest from 9th Avenue Southwest to the Dead End, project number 22107. Amount to be assessed is $98,337.80 at 3.75% interest for 15 years. Mitch?
Once again, no new changes on our plans for this project. This is a full-depth reclamation project, so it's a little more involved than a mill and overlay, but I have also not received any written objections.
Thank you, Mitch. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Very good. Then counsel, any questions for Mitch? If not, looking for a resolution for item number 11 D, declaring the cost. So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine E, resolution adopting the assessment role. I just do that?
So moved.
11E, 11E, sorry. Resolution adopting assessment role.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Vaschusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember-at-large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Under petitions and requests, it's like 12A is approving the modified 2022 insurance rates. A resolution, Tom?
Yes, before council tonight is a resolution to amend the health insurance rates that employees will pay in the, for the remaining balance of 2022. This takes into account the contribution change that is also part of the resolution for 12B. So what this will do is it'll get the insurance rates back to where it's just total premium and not contribution and premium, and then as part of the April 7th check, we will make that back up to the employees for the overpayments in those first three months as part of that resolution. Then 12B, the second one, is the authorization, we talked about the last work session, for the reimbursement to the employees and retirees, et cetera, for not having that contribution in 19 through 2021.
So we got that resolution on the retirees and the way to pay their.
That would include everybody. That was the new resolution that came out today.
Mechanism to pay that.
I understand there was a meeting earlier today. I wasn't part of a meeting earlier today that that decision was made.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good news. That seems very fair. So looking for a resolution for item number 12A, approving modified 2022 insurance rates?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Okay, and item number twelve B is approving the health insurance reimbursement to employees from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is a resolution approving budget adjustment number two. Tom?
Budget adjustment number two is being brought forward to council based on the request from department heads to primarily carry over dollars that were approved in the twenty-twenty-one budget but were not spent. Technically, under budgeting practices, those budgets expire on December thirty-first for invoices that are not received before then or dated before then. A lot of these issues are COVID issues, supply issues, et cetera. That's why they're a larger dollar amount than in normal years. But by having council authorize, these budget carryovers would then amend the twenty-twenty-two budget, which would allow those departments to then finish the acquisition of those items that, um, that were planned on in the prior year. In addition to that, there's a hundred thousand dollars transferred out from the city's general fund into the health insurance fund to help cover the twenty-twenty-two contribution issue that we have with the health insurance fund, but that will just take care of twenty-twenty-two. So again, with that, that would allow us to amend the budget for twenty-twenty-two and allow those expenditures to then go forward in this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Counsel, anything for Mr. Dankert?
Tom, net cost to taxpayers is neutral because we already set those dollars aside last year, right?
Correct. So it's in the, it was in the tax levy last year, not spent. So when you get our year-end financial statements, they're done being out, now we're drafting them, you'll see a large increase in fund balance. Part of it's because we weren't able to get these even though we tried.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, looking for a resolution approving budget adjustment number two.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. Item number fourteen is a motion appointing Camden Harp to the planning commission, term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-two. Cam- Camden, uh, Mr. Harp is very excited to serve, happy to have him. So we're just looking for a motion accepting him onto the planning, uh, commission.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most? That motion carries. Item number fifteen is a motion granting the planning and zoning department authorization to remove junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. Uh, item number fifteen A is Seven-Eleven, Sixth Ave. Southeast, the Nelson property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries. Item number fifteen B is the property located at Two-O-four, Twelfth Street Southeast, the Bedell property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most? That motion carries. Our last item onto the agenda before, uh, citizens addressing council is item number sixteen, a discussion for the need of an interim park and rec director. Just want to kick this off by saying, uh, park and rec, uh, commission or board met. At a special meeting, I was able to attend that along with Mr. Clark and Ms. Weickman. They're advocating, they made a motion to approve interim director in Kevin Nelson's absence. They also brought forward a name out of abundance of caution by our city attorney. We're requesting that that name of the employee isn't mentioned tonight, so we can just talk about the interim position. Um, and the, and the discussion is, is not a public hearing, but it's a discussion that council can have. Certainly, uh, we always like to work together with our boards and commissions, and we, we always are happy to have people serving in such capacity. Uh, sometimes it does seem to run counter to what city administration and city has been doing as far as a plan. But I would just, the discussion is, is about, is there a need? And, you know, just some background from my perspective is the city administration met with Kevin. Uh, he's been gone about sixteen days now. We met with him prior, as long with, with also staff, and determined that, uh, folks were going to step up and keep the wheels on this thing. So that plan was in place, and how that was or wasn't communicated certainly could be subject to some other further discussion. But the plan was in place, and, and this appeared to be somewhere where we didn't need an interim, uh, person. We have had it in a few situations, haven't in other situations. The last hire of Kevin, we did not have an interim. Other departments we do and other departments we don't. But this particular, I, I believe this particular need, uh, is, is being accomplished through, uh, the good folks at the Park and Rec stepping up and, uh, and getting the work done that needs to be done. I know since, since Kevin's been gone, we have hired two pool coordinators, so things are being accomplished. I get we are in the middle of a park and rec master plan, but that's going to be, uh, held off until we get a new director because that should be under the purview of the new director anyway. So the council, the council needs to discuss, uh, whether they feel the recommendation from the, the Park and Rec Board to hire an interim, uh, for the next few days. And I know, Trish, I think I asked you, we had six employees, or six applicants, uh, right now came in. I believe five, five are external and one is internal, but we have some applications with interviews starting April fourth that week. So we don't have a lot of time without one. We probably have just as much time already gone by without one than we'd have left, but I open it up to council to get their, their take on what they might feel is appropriate.
Your Honor, if I may, um, I guess I was a little disappointed to see that this was just a discussion amongst council. I think we're setting a bad precedence here. The Park and Rec Board is in charge of the Park and Rec Department. It is their prerogative, their charge, to manage the department. And if they feel the need and want an interim director and passed a motion at a special meeting on Friday, which I listened in on, I think that is what we should be acting on. I also feel that there are people here that should be heard. I don't think council has all the information that they need without hearing from some of these people. So if I have to, I will make a motion to allow the public to speak during this, um, discussion so that we can hear from them as well. That's, the first item I want to talk about is to get that out in the open that we can hear from the public if needed.
Well, I think we know where the Park and Rec Board, they made the motion clearly. I don't know that any more testimony from them in the public setting. I just fear that we open it up to some employment issues if the name slips out as to who they recommend.
Well, I think-
I'll second that motion because I feel like we need to hear from people from the park board too.
I am- I think we're doing a disservice to our, our, our board by not allowing at least the board chairman to speak. I think we're setting a bad precedence for our, the public when we ask these people to serve and when they get impassioned and dare to serve on the board and they're, they, they take the time to learn what their responsibilities are on the board. And we tell them that, oh, no, we know better than what the charter says. That's not what you're supposed to do. You can't have that. You don't have the authority to do that when it's clear, when you read the charter, that the charter sets up, I mean, the charter is the constitution of the city. The charter sets up the Park and Rec Board. It sets up the, the, the park, the library board. I mean, I think that we need to follow the charter and these people, this board has the power and authority to do what it did. So we have to respect that.
Can I respectfully ask a question? Because I would agree. I think we follow the charter. I reread the city charter, you know, specifically the section, and I guess I'm wondering if we can find the sentence that gives personnel authority to any board and commission. Because when I look at section three point oh eight, "The mayor shall have, subject to ordinances, et cetera, a general supervision of all departments of city government, all executive city officers, all employees of the city." Start to get into section four dot oh seven, "Departments of administration, the council may create offices, departments, divisions, et cetera." And then when I read through the Park and Rec, I mean, clearly it gives authority for, you know, how we spend funds and things like that, but I didn't see anything about personnel in there. In fact, the only personnel-related parts of the entire thing on page fifty-five, section eleven point oh one says, and this is more around the board, "That any vacancies by resignation or otherwise shall be filled by the mayor," with the consent of, so I guess, am I missing a sentence somewhere in here?
I guess if you go to section eleven oh one, Mr. Baskin, the first sentence of that section states, "There is hereby created and established a park and recreation board, which shall have control and management of public parks and recreation activities of the city of Austin." I think that spells it out right there.
But there's nothing about personnel.
Well, it says management of the Park and Rec.
Yep.
The parks and the recreation activities. I think that includes the, everyone in the department and overseeing the hiring of, I mean, every director that we've had, the park board has hired. The library board hires the director for the library without any input from council. The last director of the library was hired without any input from council at all.
But administration-
And now we're not letting-
The administration was involved in that.
Yes, but as a, as a-
City administration and our HR, we really do, it becomes a slippery slope if we allow our-
Well, then, the city administration and the HR should be working with the Park and Rec Board to have gotten this resolved before, so that it could have come to council.
Certainly, questions-
In their terms, I guess properly in their eyes, I don't see anything wrong with how the Park and Rec Board went about doing this and presenting it to us. And I think we should be acting on that motion. I don't think it's council's place to dismiss the Park and Rec Board and the action that they took.
Not to dismiss your motion, and we have a second on the table to allow public comment, but the consistent of, since I, we had a situation with the Human Rights Commission that we didn't allow it to be a public hearing. We, they had a board mem, they had a board member that they wanted removed. It was, it was a time where it was not under the public, uh-
And I, and I realize that, Your Honor. I realize that these are our meetings and the public is, is allowed to speak at our discretion. And so I guess that's why I'm making the motion, because as a council, we do have that authority to make a motion to allow public speaking when you have said, said that you do not want public comment. And I guess in this case, I'm asking the council to decide what they would like, whether they'd like that public input or not. I think that to get the full information that we need, we need to hear from some of these people.
And I, I think the council understands where that, by their motion alone, where they, where they stand. I don't think we're going to hear anything new from, from the folks stepping forward. They're going to advocate for that position. I just, it's a slippery slope, but there is a motion, a second on the table. I would entertain a, a roll call on that. Tom?
So I have a motion by councilmember at large Austin, second by councilmember Waller to allow the public to speak on this interim park and rec director issue. So an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Okay. Comments from council before we ask the public?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Byram, I'd love your perspective on, I mean, you're much more read on the city charter piece of it. How do we square the mayor, being the executive officer, the council powers in the Park and Rec or library board or wherever? How do we think about that?
The general structure of our charter is that there is a broad authority in the council and the mayor, uh, broad authority over all operations of the city, uh, that the city administrator serves as the assistant to the mayor and the council in orchestrating and carrying out the day-to-day and the minutia of government so that the council doesn't have to be put in a micromanaging position. So if the council and the mayor have authority, then the city administrator has that authority subject to the council and mayor's oversight. The various boards and department heads operate at a level lower than that and have their own areas of influence, uh, whether it's the, the planning commission or the library board or the, um, the board that we're speaking about tonight. Their function is to, uh, take care of the smaller items within their area and to make recommendations to the council or to provide information to the council in the specific area of hiring and firing and disciplinary, uh, activities or whatever related to our employees of a variety of levels. We have professional staff, including an HR director and executive, and a city administrator whose task is to coordinate those things and to make sure that the city's interests are always protected and coordinated. And that process has been followed successfully, uh, through a lot of different departmental level hirings uh, over the years. Uh, I would note that, uh, in talking about the charter in specific, I appreciate the items that you have highlighted, but in that section eleven point oh one, there's also the express reference to compensation of all employees of the Park and Rec Board, blah, 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 maybe fixed from time to time from the ci, by the city council of the city of Austin. Again, bringing back the employment piece, to be specific. The reality is the council's answerable to the people. The council appoints the members of these commissions and boards. The members of the commissions and boards do serve very valuable functions. The grant of authority to the park board is to manage the grounds and the activities. So that would be day-to-day decisions about pool, when we're going to offer this or that sort of organized sporting activity, how we're going to manage the trees and vegetations and parklands and equipments located in those areas, and to make recommendations to the council of a budget annually with detailed line items so that the council can weigh in on that budget. So the idea is that it'd be a collaborative, but the idea is that ultimate authority sits with the council, and that's the same with each of these boards and commissions.
Thank you.
Can I say something, please?
Sure.
Um, I serve on the Park and Rec Board and the process, I know everyone's asking, why do we want an interim? Well, we want an interim because the process of hiring is not going to be this four-week timeline that's been laid out for you. The Park and Rec Board would like to evaluate the candidates. We'd like this be able to score the candidates. We'd like to also be involved in all of the hiring. That's not something you can put a timeline to. The posting doesn't close till the twenty-eighth of this month. They want to turn around and have us do interviews the very following week when we haven't even seen candidates, we haven't been presented with any of the information of the people who have applied. We'd like that responsibility to help hire. Obviously, Trish and Clark will be involved in that as they were with Kevin and they have been in the past. Our position here is we'd like someone to be in charge temporarily while we attempt to find a leader. You guys, with the hiring situation going on right now, there's no guarantee we're going to find the right candidate by the end of the month. There is an opportunity out there where it could take us two to six months. We don't know the process, but we have to go through the process and we don't want to leave the department with one person doing this, one person doing that. We'd like one person to lead the charge, to communicate with the board so that we can all be on the same page. We have budgets that have to be done come in June, that have to be to council by, what is it, August first typically? There's a lot that goes on and it's a really big budget to do, but we want to have some consistency in our department while we find the next director. That is the reason why we called a meeting and we'd like to instill an interim director for the department temporarily until we find the right person to take over this department. This department is very, very important to the city of Austin and our community really depends on the Park and Rec. So I, I mean, I would like to hear from Helen, the chair of our board, as she has spent a lot of time in this effort of putting together a lot of information for you guys if you'd like to hear from her.
And we will do that. And councilmember Waller, though, just a correction, you know, this, this is a discussion about the, the need for an interim director, then you also mentioned about the board screening the candidates, and that's not part of the process. It never has been.
They've always been part of it.
The screening of those applicants, though, is a HR issue.
Why can't the board be involved in this?
They got to, they got to do a point system before.
Interviewing, but not the screening, as far as I know. The screening isn't part of it.
You were on the-
Interview, you'll be on the interview, three of you, as it was last time, will be on the interview, certainly. But the scoring is, as a department head among the colony, I'm not even involved in the screening of the applicants that come in, just out of fairness, so that's that. But, uh, anybody else want to speak to the matter of the need for the Park and Rec interim?
I, I agree with, uh, both what Jeff and, and Rebecca have said. I've done a lot of visiting with, with the Park and Rec and different departments. I had a lot of discussions and attended the meeting last Friday as well. So I, uh, back you up, and I'd also like to hear from whoever wants to speak.
So a couple of questions I've got here are, I think, one is, you know, we had worked out a plan prior to Kevin leaving, so kind of what's changed since then that doesn't work? Two, clearly having somebody be in char, like, why are we not confident that Administrator Clark can handle that? Because there's a lot of stuff that we have handled that. Three then is kind of what work is the interim director going to do? So how does, like, what are the decisions that are going to be made over, say, in the next thirty to sixty, even ninety days that we need to have made that we want to make sure get made by an interim director that wouldn't be made by a per, like, I guess, if we're going to pay somebody money to be an interim director, going to pay somebody money to be an interim director, kind of what's the city getting, and what's the unique value that we'd create from that position versus kind of how things had been set up?
I guess one thing I'd say on that plan supposedly that you said that was put in place, one of the faults of that was it was never communicated with the board. Maybe it was communicated with staff, but the board was not made aware that this was going on internally, and I think they should have been involved in that. And I guess if Mr. Clark has time to oversee this department on a daily basis and be the point person for the board, I think maybe we need to reevaluate his job, that if he has enough time to run the park and rec, maybe we need to reevaluate what we're paying him and what we're paying him for. Also, I understand that if he is appointed the interim director, that creates a conflict that we'd have to look into, too. So I guess that's the reason why I think we need to respect the research and work that the board has done and follow their lead. I mean...
Jeff, where do you see a conflict with Craig on that?
Well, it's, I've been told that if, well, supposedly, as the city administrator, he is one that oversees grievances. So if he is the interim director of the park and rec, and somebody has a grievance in the park and rec with him, who does it go to? That's, to me, that's a conflict of interest.
So I guess I'm confused.
But basically, I guess, there was just a lot of poor communication from administration with the board, and I think the board was disrespected in that regard. And we need to get the respect back. I mean, if we start doing this action, you know, what, how are we, we have a hard enough time getting people to serve on our boards. When you've got a group of people that have dedicated their time and passion for the park and rec department, come forward and put the work into this that they have, and for us to just poo-poo it because the city administrator knows better, I think that's a great lack of respect, in my mind.
How it was communicated that we didn't need an interim, and that Craig was just going to be involved with helping the wheels on among the park staff, we did have two meetings in a row where our council representative on the board could have certainly added, you know, asked for an update on the park board or park director, where are we at with it? But we didn't hear any questions. So we don't know what you're looking for. When you don't know, again, communication, we could put every item out that we think of to every board, and sometimes you're going to miss them. But certainly, as our representative, Representative Waller, councilmember Waller, could have asked in two consecutive meetings of city council where we're at with the hiring, I think we could have avoided what we're in right now.
I think it was just a lack of disrespect from you guys to not come to the board on that meeting that we had, what was it, March 2nd, Kevin's last meeting, and inform us of the plan. I mean, he did not leave us with your, like, the knowledge that you were going to be overseeing the department, which, again, we would like to have some sort of plan, and, you know, we'd like to decide, too, who's going to help run our department in the interim.
I know that last meeting, I wanted to get there. I know Craig Clark did, too. We had a function in St. Paul. We were gone for the night. But certainly would have been there just to wish him well. But again, we did have a plan in place, but I guess the item is still on. Craig, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, I mean, we did meet with Mr. Nelson in advance, went over that. I was surprised it wasn't on the agenda, you know. So why that didn't happen, I don't know, or why the board, I mean, they're saying goodbye to Mr. Nelson. Why wouldn't the board have asked, is there a plan? I mean, if there was concern about the plan, why, we had a meeting on the 4th, and then a special meeting was called three days later to talk about the topic. Why wasn't it talked about when Mr. Nelson was there? I wasn't there, but that seemed like a pretty good opportunity to try to get some detail and direction on what the plan was going forward.
And before we open it up to the park board and any other public comment, anybody else have anything on council?
Well, I think Craig's been doing it now for, what, three weeks or what have you. He didn't appoint himself, first of all. As part of his position, he slides over and takes that duty over. It is March. There's not a whole lot going on now.
This is the busiest time of the year for the park and rec.
There's six, order, please, six applicants that somebody said that we have right now that could start in less than a month. So you put interim in there, say that interim does not get picked to the position, that interim goes back to their other position, and is that something that's going to cause some bad feelings that they're not chosen? I just think this is, this is just going to cause some issues.
Okay. Anybody else, council, posting?
I think my biggest concern, listening to that, the two things that have me concerned are, one, the timeliness of the hire. I can appreciate Councilmember Waller's concern about how this may drag on for months, and there's definitely a chance that that happens. I do think having six applicants and it closing this week makes the timeline that we've outlined so far still very feasible, if not probable. So when I look at a short-term window, you know, this is, the amount of time that Kevin will be gone is equal to or less than a typical FMLA claim of 12 weeks. So that's not like there's this huge gap. If we could stick to that timeline, I honestly would find it preferable not to have an interim that is somebody making decisions that they wouldn't be responsible to a month or two months later. That's the part that makes me concerned. If there, you know, if we look at these applicants that after it closes on Friday, and there's nobody there that meets the qualifications, or we need to reopen the post, at that point, I think looking for an interim position, because we now think we're going to have a three- to six-month window, makes a lot more sense. But I think time is of the essence. Qualified candidates aren't going to sit around waiting for weeks and months for people to review things and score things. The, you know, to grab the best candidate, you need to work efficiently. And I think the process outlined strikes me as very efficient at this point.
Let me just say that having been on the park and rec board and gone through the process when we hired Mr. Nelson, the candidates that we interviewed, I would say were not very stellar. We had one candidate that was outstanding, that was basically the board's first choice, that took another job, and we went with our second choice in Mr. Nelson, when we probably should have opened it up and reposted it, because we had a wide variety of people with a wide variety of backgrounds, and none of them really stood out, except for the one candidate that we didn't get. So there's no guarantee that, sure, you know, you can look, and Ms. Weickman says we have six candidates, but do we have six quality candidates, or do we just have six names of people that are interested and aren't employees of the city currently? I mean, I think we need to look internally as well as externally for this.
Yeah.
Because we've done that in the past, and I think some of our most successful hires have been internal candidates, that don't necessarily have all the qualifications that the job posting may read. And we need to give those people a chance, too, because they're already members of our community, they're part of the department already, or part of the city, and they're committed to the city and to the community. And I think we need to give them some weight as well, and not just dismiss them because they're internal candidates.
And just so we're clear, I'm not dismissing at all. I would love an internal candidate to be on this.
I guess I was just trying to say that, you know, to have six people, sure, it sounds great, but does that mean we have six good choices?
And again, if there were not, that would be more where I would be interested in possibly having an interim, because to your point, if we do end up selecting an internal candidate would be fabulous. But if they now have to be over the person who just we made interim for a month or a month and a half, I think would introduce awkwardness into that relationship that we don't necessarily need to have. So again, for me, I think I'm more comfortable waiting to see how this first batch looks, and if we can feel comfortable staying with our timeline, I don't think we need one. However, if that timeline deviates, and it very well may, because I agree, you don't want to hire the wrong person, then I'd be very comfortable at that point coming in with an interim.
Yeah, and I think to build off a councilman postman, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm not opposed to an interim director on there. I think, there's two things that are giving me concern here. One is the short-term timing. I think, you know, short-term versus long-term piece of it. And like, I literally had nobody talk to me about the park and rec position and the need for an interim director until Friday, 16, 17 days after, you know, Kevin had left, and, you know, at least a month and a half after he had seen it. So it's, if it was so critical that we had an interim director, I guess I was a little bit surprised that we didn't have that conversation previously. But again, if this is a three-to-six-to-nine-month type of thing, makes a ton of sense. I guess the other concern I have is, I don't know that this needs to be all that controversial. Like, it feels like there's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of, like, combative-ness. We've got awesome people that are on the park and rec board who are doing the Lord's work, and God knows not getting paid for it. I think everybody cares about park. It's just, I'm disappointed we didn't take any of the 14 off-ramps that we had before we gotten into a public kind of fistfight about this to figure this out, because I don't think it sets us up all that well.
I, somebody at the park and rec meeting did say that this goes deeper. This goes much deeper than what we're talking about, and that there are things that, communication issues or something that needs to be looked at and fixed with the new director, and communication with, you know, all of us and administration. So I agree that, it's sad that it got to this point, but we're here to speak on their behalf, and, you know...
Yeah. I think, I think everybody is right on the communication here. As I mentioned from the outset, communication could have been handled differently, both sides, no doubt. And I like to have a council, a culture of communication, and it was lost on this one. We have representatives that sit on different boards and commissions, and these conversations need to happen. We're all just an email or a phone call, or a meeting away from getting some accurate information to bring back to the board, and having you bring the information back from the board to us. So that was missed here, that culture of communication that I would love to see a little bit better. Yeah, it needs to be fine-tuned, no doubt. But, and again, to Councilmember Baskin's point, I've been thinking about this for a couple of weeks, the same thing. It's not that big of a deal. It really isn't that big of a deal to hire an interim or not. But again, it does come down to the process and the slippery slope of councils and boards, or commissions and boards being able to make HR decisions that really do, it's a recommendation, yes, but this feels more like a demand, and that's where I go sideways with it. So Councilmember Obala, you had something?
I was going to keep my comment, but first of all, I just want to say thank you for all the, our people who serve on the commission, for your free time, and you're doing amazing work. It's sad that we end up to discuss something like this. And the biggest thing, I received this email last week, I think around Friday, and I tried to weigh in all options, and I love Austin, and anything that we have to do to invest in people in Austin internally, in also having them grow here and stay here, that's the best thing as someone who loves the city. And when Mr. Nelson announcement was met, I, we should have come up with that right away. Okay, we have this option. So I don't know how that went through, but whoever who will be in this position, I was looking at how the document that was put together by the board, and how long are we waiting for this hiring? And if we are hiring at the end of the month, why do we need one? But if the hiring will not goes until that, I think, do we have something urgent that we need to take care now, and so that we can have an interim? And if we need an interim, are those interim qualified? Are there qualifications that an interim have different qualification than a permanent? So those are the things I've been weighing over the weekend and see how it is that it come to be like this. And this is, I don't like the council to be like this, but we will face this sometime as a public service. But I hope it goes well, and I wish whoever is applying for this position all the best.
Council, anything else before we take public comment? Anybody from the public or the board would like to speak? Just if you could, step forward and give your name and address, please.
What happens to the position, if there is an interim, who fills the interim's position?
Well, I guess the board made a selection, a candidate's name. I would imagine that'd be part of the motion, that it would be, it would be an interim with that person.
Right, but then their position now, who does that position? That would be vacated.
No, they would do both.
We have to fill that then, as well.
They would do both.
They'd do both.
Again, much like... And the reason there wasn't an interim hired when we hired Kevin Nelson is because the director at that time, Kim Underwood, agreed to stay on until somebody was hired to replace her. In this case, I mean, I mean, she was retiring, so she had the luxury of being able to stay on until we found a replacement or was willing to do that. In this case, Kevin found another job and left, and we're left without a point person for the board. And I think that's the biggest thing, is that the board feels they need a point person because they can't be there every day to make sure things are being run. And they feel they need somebody, and they know of somebody in the department that they feel they want to fill that spot so that is directed, reports to them, and is responsible for making sure that the day-to-day things get done, and that the communication is there. Obviously, the communication wasn't there with administration, and so I guess I can understand why the board would be a little leery at this point. So I guess I'd like to hear from Helen Jarrett, the chairman of the board of the park and rec.
Again, before, Helen, you can step to the mic, that's fine. But as you're walking, I think just some communication issues that, you know, how Kevin Nelson relayed the information from the meeting with the city is something we don't know. But there was a, there was a meeting with input from him and the park and rec staff to develop this plan. He did a seven-page document of kind of highlighting what needs to be taken care of right now, what can wait, and those were very helpful. And then the city staff, existing, the park and rec staff stepping forward to say, yeah, we got this, was definitely communicated to Kevin. But how we portrayed that, or forward that onto the board, we don't know. But Helen, you know, step to the mic?
And just please give your name and address for the record, please. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Helen Jarrett, 406 Eighth Place Northwest, Austin, Minnesota. Good evening. I'm happy to be here, sad to be here, too, at the same point. I realize that I am not the best person to answer Councilman Baskin's question, however. I do think that Kim Underwood should come up. I can convey, however, the way that Kevin left the last night of the board meeting, and he said there was no communication to him about who was going to be point person, that there was no direction given to the park and recreation department as far as how everyone was going to move forward. I think we were waiting, and he would periodically talk to me about it. Oh, haven't heard anything. No, don't have any plan. And then we were hoping that Mr. Clark and Mayor King would show up to our last board meeting with Kevin, but that didn't happen. So right now, I would like to ask him to come up to speak to the need for an administrator. I was also told that this was subsequent, so this was March 8th, I believe, when I contacted Tricia Weickman to ask her past precedents. So when Denny Mashka passed away, there was Kim, who was already in the athletic depart, the park, excuse me, park and recreation department. So she was, served as interim. She was appointed board by the park and recreation board. It was then passed by council at the next council meeting to approve her. And we were acting on past precedents, based on those minutes, based on the actions of the board, according to our interpretation of the city charter. So, Kim, if you'd come up, please. Oh, Gretchen Verso.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Ramlow, 1908 Oak Tree Lane, Unit 8. I'm like Obala. I love Austin. I was on the park and rec board for many, 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 many years, and enjoyed every bit of it. But I, my, just my thought is that right now is, we're going into the busy, we, right now, the park and rec is going into one of the busiest times of year with summer programming. And having been on that board, I know how crazy it gets. Just even having that one person interim, somebody there that's the go-to person. And it's, I mean, if Craig can spend every day there, I mean, it's an everyday thing. I, board members would come and help with things. And here's a thought, too, you know, having an interim, and if it works the way it did with Kim, it's kind of nice for that new person that you hire. I guess that's the way I look at it. If I was coming into that job, to have somebody there that knew what had been going on for those last few weeks, it would be a really help to me as a new director, rather than just coming in and not knowing who to ask for what, because that can be hard, too. But, and I don't think it has to be confrontational. It's just because we care about Austin, and we, and those of us who are, have been involved with park and rec care about park and rec. But I can also say, I was there when, way back when Denny Mashka and through Kim. I think you do need to listen to Kim because she knows how the department inside, outside, back, forth, and she can give you some guidance. So I just hope you'll listen to her.
Thanks, Gretchen.
Thanks. Feel like this is old home week. Underwood, 88...
You want to be the interim director.
Don't think. 258 Street, Austin. You know, I love that park and rec, you know. I mean, I was there a long time, and yes, this is a time of year that stuff starts getting deep. It is March, and it goes by just like this. And pretty soon, you know, depending on who's doing what, you have everybody just pinging off each other. And that's the way we, that's just the way we worked, anyway. We were a team. We weren't one-on-one in that place. So for you to think about what's really happening, and I really hope you get the best candidates, I really do. It's unfortunate that Kevin wasn't here that long. So, I mean, that's really kind of a bummer, but you don't learn, you don't learn a lot in, in three years. You really don't, not in this job. There's, and I can go back to when one of the other persons started in the office and said, how you doing on that job? What do you mean? I think I got it. Oh, yeah, you really don't yet. I mean, they admitted, it's like, that first six months is like, holy crap, you know? And then they just, it just keeps on going and going and going. So it changes. And it's, it has got its own seasons, but it's still the park and rec, and it's, you're serving the quality of life in our city. And I think it's an awesome place. So just, you know, think about it. It should not be this big hoopla thing either, you know? I mean, everyone should be able to talk, and talk to each other. I agree. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, but that's, that's what I think about the whole, having somebody to point to that board, to tell, keep that board apprised to what's happening in that department. That is a, that's huge. They, when I was there, they knew everything. It was just, if somebody missed a meeting, I'd call, hey, this is what we did. This is what's going to happen. This is what's going down here. This is, you know, three crews having this issue, or, you know, I mean, they just knew everything. Just was nice. Just was nice.
Kim, two questions for you. Three. So you really don't want to be the interim if we appoint one?
Really.
If we made the motion, does she have to take it or does she decline it correctly? No.
These grandbabies are just, you know, they're keeping me young.
So again, two questions. One is, can you help us kind of understand, like, what are the types of decisions over the next, say, like, sixty days that they would have to make? And I guess the second piece is, like, if the learning curve is so steep, like, should we be worried about if we've got an interim that's only going to do it for sixty days? Like.
We can't.
Being able to get value?
Can't really talk that second question much, no can we? But the first one is, you know, when you're when you're talking, I don't think the board's really saying they want someone's going to come in and just, you know, make all these decisions without them. They're a go between with the board and, you know, it's just another arm. Everything that the department, it's already going to be on its goal to get things done. But to have that person that can go to the next park board meeting and say, hey, this is what's happening, ooh, or even call, say, we need to talk about this soon. You know, the park board's always been really good about being the hub and help. And they and they still are. They're they're just those kind of people when they're on there. I mean, shoot, if I really was in dire straits, I'd constantly, all right, can somebody come here to this tournament and help me out with this? And they would be there. It was just, it was just that. Good. So I think that's more or less what you're really looking for is the communication piece with the board and and not these big decisions that you don't know what are going to come down the pipe. But if it's something major, you know darn well, they're going to know about it. And then you're going to know about it because Rebecca's going to bring it back. So that's, does that help?
And and Kim, does there is there help from the Park and Rec has internal supervisors, I know in Luke and Randy for sure. Is there is there relief in that, having those supervisors, that kind of history to keep the wheels on or?
Oh, I'd say.
In a month period or?
I'd say pretty much, yeah, everyone.
They could they could do it, but you'd still think there's enough need for a super for an interim.
Well, I think.
You know, you have supervision oversight.
It's not, and I don't even want to call it so much supervision, but you know, when you when your team's together and when you're you're doing what you're doing and then you're, I mean, you got to think about it. You don't, you don't think about it in that realm of things, not when you're just trying to do this for an interim position. I know they did set mine when I started in July of oh eight to the end of the year. So it was six months.
Right. And that was unforeseeable, Denny's death in the middle of July or.
Right.
Started in July.
The wheels were already rolling pretty fast.
Well, thank you for perspective, Kim.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Counsel, decision time, motion time, unless there's further discussion or comments.
I'll make the motion to approve what the board, the Park and Rec board approved the interim on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, to go ahead with their recommendation.
Second. Any further discussion?
I I do have one question. So if voting for this motion, would this be voting for allowing the board to select who the interim is or that there would be an interim that would be decided?
Well, I don't know, I might need some counsel on this, but the board made the Mark and Rec board made the motion with a certain employee to be that interim. Don't know if we still have some oversight on that interim or we absolutely have to follow that board recommendation. I would like some counsel on that, Craig or Craig.
Well, the motion that was made was to approve the recommendation of the park board, which included both that we have an interim and named a name. So if that carries forward, then we have just the the task of trying to figure out what that means from an employment and payroll and position perspective internally. It's the council deferring the judgment out of the council's prerogative and into the hands of of others. It's a little difficult as I sit here right now to think of all the ways that that gets squarely on us, but it is what the motion was.
I agree with you. Thank you. So you have some perspective from a lot of different voices, counsel. We have a motion and a second to approve the interim with that named employee. And I guess I'd call a roll call vote on that.
Motion by Councilmember Waller, seconded by Councilmember Large Austin, to appoint the interim director as recommended by the Park and Rec board at the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. So an aye vote is in favor of such.
Can I ask one question? Have we done, like, I mean, is there a value in tabling this till our next meeting just to figure out, like, where we, I mean, because we're going to meet, what, April fourth, we'll have a pretty good idea of how the first round interviews go. I don't know, I'm still struggling with, I think there's a compelling case made for having a point person, right? And I'll admit, you know, kind of coming into it, I don't know that I was thrilled about voting for an interim director, but I think it was more around, like, I didn't like the way it came about, right? I think there's a good argument in terms of having somebody to at least kind of be the point person. I think there's a good logical argument and I think I, you know, I appreciate that piece of it. So I'm trying to square, like, the timing side of it.
I think right now we have a motion. There's a motion on the table. So I appreciate the discussion point and I guess if the motion fails, we could look to another motion of table. Yeah, with that, Gretchen, I also I also understand that, you know, working in the public sector, as long as I have Park and Rec boards or any board wouldn't happen to have the knowledge of employment history of anything that could be good or bad in that file of that person. So that's a slippery slope, too, to allow a board to pick a person that internally we know there's something nefarious there. But again, not in this situation, but I'm saying that's a slippery slope, too. They've done it in the past. So anyway, just that's we have a motion and a second on the table. Time to.
So an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Baskin.
Yeah, I I wouldn't mind an interim director. I struggle to to kind of give up our ability to to have the mayor appoint that. And so on this specific motion with the wording, I'll vote nay.
Obala.
Can you come back to me? Take a pass. I will abstain.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmo.
I'm with Councilman Baskin that I'm not quite at this point ready to go for the interim. Doesn't mean I wouldn't be at the next meeting, depending on how things look, but at this point, I'm a nay.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Nay.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
With a three, three vote, Your Honor.
Mayor's team vote made how many tie breaks in his thirteen, fourteen years? One, zero?
Two or three.
And have I done three already? This might be the third? Good Lord, people. You know, again, I, for the efficacy of the of the process, there's nothing bad about an interim, there's nothing bad about the person that they wanted to project, but for the efficacy of the pro- process, I'm going to have to say nay.
Motion fails four, three, Your Honor.
Continue on and we'll keep monitoring the situation as far as hires or applicants come in. And if it gets long in the tooth or we don't recognize any anybody with qualifications in the first round, we'll we'll readdress this. So thank you all and apologize that it had to be somewhat emotional and all this and just try to keep, keep doing good, good work. That's all there is to it. Everybody does good work. But again, just for the efficacy of the process, it's where it is. So thank you all. On to citizens addressing the council. I didn't remember, no, no number. Is anybody here in the public that has any energy to address the council? Ma'am, are you here to speak on some?
I want to address you.
Sure. Come on forward and just give your name and address, please, for the record.
Okay. I'm Maxine Tasker, twelve oh seven Tenth Street Northeast, Austin, Minnesota. Okay, do you guys want a background story or just what I'm here for?
Tell us the story, Margene. Margene, you said?
Maxine.
Maxine, sorry.
Yeah. Well, on February fourteenth, my kind of my boyfriend had a major seizure right in front of me at the house and I don't know if I could tell this. Anyway, so I called nine one one immediately and within ten minutes, two ambulance people were there and they did awesome. And then later on, a fireman, I don't think he's a fireman, I think he was a, what do they call them? People that just come in to help.
Paramedic?
No, a fireman, that's just, they're not, I don't know what they are, volunteer firemen.
Paid part time? Paid part time?
Yeah. Well, he came in and he didn't announce he was coming in and then he stood at the end of Mike's bed and said negative things about him, which I didn't think was fair, you know, and saying, oh, you know, Mike doesn't like the firemen and this and that and I don't know. Anyways, I just told him, well, the 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 ambulance people who were still working on Mike at the time, they said, okay, we don't need you, you can go. So in so then, so then, this happened at eleven forty in the morning, they were there at ten, let's see, eleven forty. So they were there at ten two, the ambulance people, and then at twelve o'clock, they left. And then I didn't go with Mike and the ambulance because of COVID and all that stuff. So anyways, so then then they called and let me know how he's doing, but his, I forgot to tell you, his blood pressure was a hundred and eighty-eight, you know, over like a hundred and forty or something. And then and then the ambulance, it was over two hundred and then he seized again and then and then in the hospital at Austin, he seized again and his temperature was over, blood pressure was over a hundred and twenty then. Well, anyway, so then I was getting ready to go to go see him. Well, then there's a knock on the door and here is Austin Animal Control. And one of those three guys, I think it's that volunteer fireman, told that told them that I have these four small chickens. They're called saramas and they're they're just itty bitty things. They're like this big. And they're they're probably about as, you know, big as a chinchilla and, you know, the body wise are small, they just have feathers that come up. I got pictures to show you if you want, but but they're really small. And and I keep them in rabbit cages because that's how small they are, that's about as big as a rabbit, too. And so one of, you know, then I think it was him, but it could have been the ambulance guys told them. Within two hours after after Mike left, I was getting ready to leave, I was worried to leave, go to Rochester, and then he has a knock on the door. And so what I'm just wondering is, is there any way you guys can make an exception that I could have these small chickens in my house? They don't bother anybody. They're they're, you know, I love them with my whole heart, you know, and, you know, it's, they're not outside chickens, they're not, you know, they're not farm chickens. I know that got the animal control guy, his name is Mick something, McDermott or something. Anyways, you know, they're not farm chickens, you know, they're just, they're show chickens that I was planning on showing him at the Austin Fair. So anyways, I was just wondering if there's any way you guys can make an exception that I can still keep them in my house so they don't bother anybody, you know? So and then I also have papers for him, too, from the breeder and they're they're, they've been vet checked when they came to me. So, you know, I got that, too, to show you guys if you wanted to see that. I don't know if you do it now, but.
So Maxine, you're running up against an ordinance that says we don't allow farm animals in the city, but.
Yeah, I know.
Do you have any?
Yeah, and apologize that your significant other had some medical condition.
Yeah, thanks.
That stuff. But yeah, ordinance is ten point one one is animals and fowl, keeping, transporting, and treatment and housing. Basically, fowl or chickens, poultry are considered farm animals and not domesticated animals. So our ordinance doesn't is, I mean, it couldn't be more explicit that poultry isn't allowed. So there, you know, it'd be kind of like asking counsel, if you got a speeding ticket, can you set aside the law and allow us somebody to speed? I mean, it's it's.
But that does happen, though. You guys do, not, I mean, not you guys, but it does happen that someone goes to, you know, and then they then they dismiss that, they don't have to pay for the, that does happen.
So if we, but if we have a ordinance, which basically means a local law, that says we can't allow it, I mean, it's not incumbent for the police chief or law enforcement officer to decide, you know, that one's okay or this one's not. I mean, it's explicitly not allowed. So council doesn't have the authority to override that. They can change the ordinance.
That's kind of what I was wondering, if maybe there's any possibility.
That's something you could ask for, but at this present time, we don't, we explicitly don't allow poultry in the city.
Well, they're they they look just like doves, you know? I mean, they're they're small like that and, you know, it'd be like having a bird, you know, in the house, you know? You know, it's just, I just want, just maybe they could make an exception or maybe change the ordinance, not that I have any say to that, but you know, because they're just show chickens and they're small and, you know, they're they're not causing anybody any problems. The neighbors, you know, didn't even know I have them and they haven't complained about it. And I even asked the guy, you know, they, Austin, what is it, I forget what those animal control people, you know, was it my neighbor complaining? And he said, no. And so that I know it was one of the one of the three, the firemen, the or the two ambulance guys. And isn't there such thing as confidentiality, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, should there should there have been confidentiality with them? Why did they have to go to them within, I mean, right away? That's why I think it's a fireman because the ambulance guys, they're too busy to do something like that. And they end up taking Mike to Rochester, the same ambulance people.
Chief McKee, can you get your officers around scene, I'm assuming? Do you have anything to say on this?
You know, only at some of the issues you're raising, can I ask, have you received a citation for the chickens at this point in time?
No.
Okay. You know, my understanding, just a refill review, is we received information that there were chickens in the home. C S L McDermott, I believe, talked to you and had given you thirty days to rehome the chickens.
Right.
And I think we're well beyond the thirty days.
Well, that's because he said if I met with the city council, then he would.
Well, I think that conversation came came later. We we generally, just like on speed and other things, we understand where this issue, it's incredibly important for Maxine, but it's not something we rush to issue a citation for. We do almost always give someone time to rehome chickens and other things, give them thirty days, find a home. We don't have to issue a citation. That's kind of like the warning for speed. The problem is, if we warn you for speed and the speed continues, then we have to look at taking some sort of action because the ordinance is specific in that we don't allow chickens. So it's at some point in time, if it gets to the chickens remaining in the home and we have to offer a citation, we would cite you, the chickens would remain in the home as the court process goes out, you would deal with the city attorney's office on that. If you have issues such as where the information came from, whether or not the government came into that information through through search and seizure means, those those are for the court and the court process to decide what the value is versus this is not the body to make those type of decisions. And again, we haven't had a citation. And so that's kind of the the guidance I can offer you on that. The the second part would be, you know, it appears you're asking in in some way to, going forward, allow a tweak or a change to the ordinance.
Right.
For you specifically. I would just generally say that, I know we use the term slipper your slope earlier and I don't want to overuse that, but trying to address things on a one on one case basis within the ordinance does open up a host of different problems each time you open it, tweak it for 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 one individual. So again, I certainly appreciate the love you have for those animals and in keeping them. And certainly there are some types of birds that are allowed under ordinance. Chickens, fowl, those have have been exempted previously and I would hope you'd be able to rehome those animals and avoid the citation or anything going forward. But if there is a citation, you do have an opportunity to go to court and talk to that judicial body that would be charged with making that type of decision.
Okay.
Counsel, anything on Maxine's issues? Anything? Thank you for.
Did you want to see pictures of them?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sure they're cuter than a bug.
They are cute. I just love them and these chickens are really cuddly and they're really, they're really affectionate with people and, you know.
Just unfortunate under our ordinance, we can't have chickens. Is there some place you might know to rehome them, a friend or?
Yeah, I know somebody who lives in Otan, but that's a long drive and I won't be able to see them very much, you know? So anyways.
All right. Well, thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Your Honor, there's someone on the.
Nathan's iPhone, is that under citizens addressing council? Nathan, could you identify yourself, please?
Yes. Hi, actually, this is my husband's phone. My name is Meg, last name is Bartz, and you need an address as well?
Sure.
206 12th Street Southeast.
Okay, Meg, what can we do for you?
And I apologize, I came, I, I came in late on the feed here, but I know on the agenda right before the park and rec discussion, the property 204 12th Street was being discussed to remove junk in a vehicle. And I was just wondering if you could tell me what the resolution was there.
I believe the resolution was that the council initiated action to clean that site up and assess the property owner, the value of the city coming to clean up that site.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Meg. We're down to honorary council member comments. Bill, you slipped in here late, brother?
Did you?
Oh, sorry.
Greg Bell.
Hey, Greg.
1004 10th Street Northwest. I have a question about the tree positions within the park and rec and where we stand on that.
I thought we got trees squared away.
I can, Ms. Wakeman is here. She can answer that one.
Okay. Trish.
With regard to trees specifically, I do believe that the council did put back in place handling the tree, trimming, removal and those kinds of things internally and not by contract for 2022. With regard to, I think you might be asking maybe more about the park maintenance position.
No, the two tree jobs that haven't come back yet.
The two individuals who had prior, who had been previously considered classified as tree trimmers are reclassified as park maintenance. And the duties of tree trimming are back in-house and being performed by individuals in that park maintenance classification. When they are performing the duties of tree trimmer, they will receive pay of a tree trimmer. But when they're not performing tree trimming duties, they'll be park maintenance.
Why weren't they reinstated? Because we have a tree crew back, don't we?
That was my understanding of the action taken by council.
Why weren't the two jobs reinstated? They were classified as park maintenance. I understand that, but now we have our tree jobs back, right? Council approved that. But we still don't have the two jobs back. They'd be performing tree trimming as park maintenance. Who is? The positions as assigned. Who is, who assigns them? Randy Hoffner. And we do that with every job or just those two jobs? It depends on what the job is, but that's how we proceeded forward. Well, aren't they in the contract? I guess probably at this point, I don't know that debate has serviced here. I'd be happy to talk to you after. No, aren't they in the, they're in the contract, two tree jobs. We're doing trees, right?
Greg, I would just advise that you set a meeting with Trish and Craig.
Well, I think we've, we've been down that road plenty of times.
There's grievances process and too, and I would just.
I'm just wondering where the council stands on that.
I, I would support the city on having those under a park maintenance position and only getting the tree paid when they're cutting trees. I don't know with the rest of the council, but it seems like it's a contractual issue that needs to be discussed with HR.
Isn't it a budget issue? I mean, council approved the positions in the budget. They should have been posted and filled.
This is a conversation for a bigger, larger group that isn't council, I don't think. I think it's a contractual issue. I don't want to get in the way of any kind of a contract language at this point.
Yeah, I thought, my understanding was we approved moving trees back in, in-house. We would pay a tree rate when people were doing tree work. I don't have any recollection of approving a specific tree position. In fact, I'm fairly confident that one of the arguments for moving it back in-house was, hey, we've already got the employees who can do tree work when they need to and don't do tree work. You know, they can do other park work when they do. So that was my understanding, Trish.
That was not my understanding of the budget that we passed. It was my understanding that we were reinstating two additional positions back to the, to the department to handle.
Yeah, mine too.
In-house tree trimming.
Yep. I, I, I did visit with park and rec employees last week and there's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot, big lack of communication. I'm really kind of, right now, I'm feeling somewhat disgusted and discouraged. And these guys, there's, there's nothing black and white. The employees, they, they don't really, and I'm not going to speak for all of them, but nobody knows really what they're supposed to be doing. There's no solid tree policy. It used to be what? Diseased, dead or something or other. And now it's just pick up the phone, give them a call, I want this tree down. So there's a lot of work to be done within the park and rec.
I couldn't agree more.
I, I think we really need to focus on them right now and do what we need to do to get this department feeling better, bring up morale.
Guys, can I make a suggestion? Like, I think we are our own worst enemy on a lot of this park and rec stuff, to be quite honest with you, because we're sitting here and we're debating, what we heard Mr. Byram tell us earlier, is that our job is oversight and then we hire people to be professionals in those positions and, and boards, things like that, so that we don't micromanage. Yet we're sitting up here talking about street level tree policy and it just encourages this, let's have open debate and appeal to the council and type of stuff. And we've got a city administrator, we've got an HR director, we're going to have a park and rec director. Like, I think there's worthy conversations to have, but like.
There are, but when you visit.
Guys, we create 95% of the controversy with park and rec and we don't have to because people love parks.
Obviously, from the comments made by council tonight, not everybody's had the same impression of what the budget.
Right. That's why they send it to us in a packet and we read the words.
I know.
And that's what we approve.
You had one interpretation and there's three of us over here nodding our heads that we had another one. So obviously, that's a communication problem with administration that.
There are, there is contractual.
Somebody's not following through.
It is black and white. It is contractual. So those words do matter.
It's, it's not black and white.
We can review those words in the.
It's not black and white.
Okay, Mr. Bell. Thank you for, thank you for your comments. We will address it through the channels.
No, you won't.
Okay, thank you. All right. Honorary counsel. Bill? Nothing. Okay. Paul?
Nothing, your honor.
Jason?
You know, I'll just, I'm disappointed with both of the park and rec conversations we had tonight. I think that certainly there's probably communication improvements that we can make across the board. I think whoever moves into this position, we want to make sure we put them in a position to succeed. We want to put, put them in a position that they're going to have the support of the council. And I think there's different ways to do things and the stylistic way that we've approached both of these just rubs me the wrong way because I think it creates, it puts people in corners and creates division where we could probably have a much more productive conversation otherwise. And so I think what we need to do is look at our own selves and how we communicate. And I can probably do it better and I'm sure everybody up here can. But there's got to be a better way to do it because park and rec shouldn't be this controversial.
Thank you. Bob?
Nothing, your honor.
I guess to follow that, I, I, I think I've seen this too many times now in the last couple of years, that it's if you're not on board with the mayor and administration, you don't count. Their opinion is the only one that matters. And if you don't believe them, you have no recourse. Because what do you do? I'm, I'm elected by the people to serve and we hire the city administrator to work for the council. He does not work for the mayor. He works for the council. And I think we need to get back to that mentality and to have better communication between council and administration. And a lot of these problems wouldn't happen. I think if council did as much, half of what Joyce does in communicating with some of our employees and realize the toxicity that is out there in our city departments right now, you'd be appalled and would want to take some kind of action and get that improved because we all love this city. I mean, that's why we're here. We heard that from several people tonight that, that testified before us and Obala, Councilmember Obala is one that always says how much he loves Austin. I love Austin. I've lived in Austin for 60 years. I've lived here all my life. And the reason I'm here today is because I love this town and I want to do what's best for the people of this town. And I think that is where we need to take our direction from and get that instilled in each and every one of us and make sure that we're doing the best for our employees and the best for our citizens. And we're, and I think we're failing on a lot of that right now. Thank you.
Becca?
Jeff couldn't have said it any better. I full-heartedly agree with what he just said and just want you to know that, yeah, the park and rec, it doesn't have to be controversial, but there's a lot of things that, powers and people pulling it in different directions. And we just want it solidarity. And that's all we asked of the council today was to make it so that we could have one line of communication and not have to reach out to five different people for the next month or two or three, whatever it ends up being. And I guess I'm just kind of disappointed after today's meeting.
Thanks.
Mike?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't think any of us were looking to have an open position at the Parks and Rec Director and I'm certainly not going to cast ill words towards the person who left, but I will say that I'm kind of looking forward to a fresh start. And I hope that kind of goes across the board. I hope that goes with us as council. I hope that goes with the Parks and Rec Board and I hope it goes with the employees. Because to, to be honest, if I was interested in this position, I would probably queue up the last couple of city council meetings. And if I watched tonight, it might give me pause to apply for what is a fabulous job in a fabulous city. So I'll take some ownership for some of that communication. And I hope that everybody else does too, because we have a great situation here. I am confident that our team is going to find the exact person that we need. But we all need to step together off on a solid foot when that person's hired.
Greg, thank you. Joyce?
I, I really don't have much more other than, you know, I, I just hope that we can proceed forward with more discussions about this.
Yes, I'm confident we can. These are the ebbs and flows of, of city government. I get all the time, we're not going to agree. We're going to have some, some disagreements over the course. And it always seems like sometimes it's the, the stuff that seems like the low-hanging fruit that we have some major issues with. But I will absolutely sit here before you and defend the good work of our city administration, Mr. Clark, as well as every department head we have. These are, there is no grass growing under anybody's feet here. There is always, always reaching out to when we do have disagreements or when these meetings are coming up. Mr. Clark will offer himself for meetings in any situation. And those are, that's not lost on me, that those are difficult conversations, those are difficult offers to make, to try to put, put some things to rest before it becomes into the public forum here. And those efforts were made in this situation, too. Unfortunate that we couldn't resolve it prior or have any kind of mutual understanding. But again, that's why council's here. We duke it out in a matter of speaking. But we have absolutely outstanding personnel. And I do hope that the next park and rec director, I wish him or her nothing but success. If that is a department that, yes, we certainly have some issues with, whether it's our issue and I own any, any behavior that I've created to create that issue, or if it's other, other issues, who knows. But it, just from my year of sitting here before you as mayor, I can, I can tell you, it has been the most troublesome communications of any department that I've, that I've had to deal with, whether it's anything. It just seems like that department and, and issues come up far more, I, I, just personally, that's, that's not anecdotal. I can document that. That's what's happening. So we do need some, some significant leadership in park and rec and I do hope we get it. We have outstanding employees doing great work. We just need to lead them and council as a, as a part in that as well. But I will absolutely defend every action of our city administrator and our department heads, as I said here before you. So anything else? Craig, do you have anything?
Yeah, we did just this afternoon, got a notice from federal ADA on our grant request for a Creekside Business Park. It's still preliminary and there's still questions that they have before final award would be made. But it looks like the city would receive about 2.2 million in grant from the federal ADA to help build out infrastructure in the parks. So that's some good news. In regards to the position here, the League of Minnesota Cities, which the city is insured under, is the insurance trust. They do have a service that provides sort of a best practice team that will come down and visit. And I, I guess to the fact that everybody seems to be interested in further dialogue in this, I think using the league as a resource would be really advantageous for us, both park and rec council, some other boards and commissions for, perhaps. So, but hopefully we could proceed forward on that to help start the dialogue. Otherwise, what we did, when summary judgment on a claim that we had at Riverside Arena, they have 60 days to appeal. But otherwise, that was ruled in the favor of the city. So otherwise, that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn to Monday, April 4th, 2022.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. We'll take a five-minute break or let Marty do some tape and then we'll open up our work session.